I'd like to call the study session meeting to order for the July 24, 2018 study session. Madam Clerk, roll call please.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Muldoon is on his way and everyone else is present.
All right, thank you. So our current business, our first item, well, let me start over. Are there any questions on the consent calendar? Mr. Avery?
I have none.
Mr. Pieter?
None.
Mrs. Dixon?
None.
Mr. Hurdman?
None.
Mr. Muldoon? He's not here. Mayor Protem O'Neill?
None.
And I have none. All right, Police Chief John Lewis is going to give us an update.
Thank you, Mary Duffield, Members of City Council. John Lewis, your Chief of Police. We have here today a what we look like in terms of crime in the city of Newport Beach mid-year, and these numbers that we're going to talk about today are going through June, the last day of June of this year, and what we've looked like so far in these six months. I have with me today our senior crime analyst Caroline Staub, who has helped me put together this presentation, just to get overall big picture of how we're doing in crime in the city. A lot of this is building on some of the things that we talked about in the planning session back in January. So first, we'll start with our UCR crime snapshot, and I promise I will try not to use a whole bunch of jargon and police-related terms, but UCR, just for sake of discussion here, is the FBI Uniform Crime Report. And what this is, are a tracking of Part I crimes, and this is something that's nationally reported, but it's the eight most serious crimes as defined by the FBI, and these are reflected here: homicide, rape, robbery, ag assault, burglary, auto theft, and arson. So Uniform Crime Report numbers are things that are tracked across the country, and the FBI compiles, publishes, and distributes this data in its annual report. So these are what these numbers are here and what the arrows reflect. And when you look at this, green here obviously means that we're down and we have the percentages there. And then for the individual crimes, and then we also look at our Part I crime overall, which is, at this point in the year, we are down almost 16%, 15.7%. There's a couple of these numbers that I want to go into a little bit further, and I will go ahead and do that now. And we'll start with our aggravated assaults. We talked back in January about aggravated assaults and what it looked like in the city and what we were doing to impact these numbers. This time last year, we had seen an uptick in our ag assaults. And last year, it comes as no surprise really to most folks that just over half of our aggravated assaults are alcohol-related. And just for again, for sake of discussion, aggravated assaults are attacks where a weapon is used even if no injuries are sustained, or the use of hands, fists, or feet, where there's a serious bodily injury here, broken bones, loss of consciousness, things of that nature. So these are serious assaults. We are down 35.9% here year-to-date, which is encouraging. That's a real encouraging number, particularly what we saw last year. So I think some of the things that we have seen here and some of the partnerships and the strategies that we have been using here, really in partnership with our folks, and West Newport is where we normally see the largest percentage of these numbers. Some of the things that we've been doing here, I think, to mitigate this have been making an impact. Now, to begin with, there's a partnership with our alcohol-serving establishments, and this is an ongoing partnership that has taken a couple of years to develop, but we feel like this ongoing communication that we have with our establishment owners is one that is impacting these numbers in a positive way. Some of the things that we've talked about and that we do on a regular basis is we have meetings with our bar and tavern owners, and these are good meetings where we feel like we've developed some good rapport and some understanding and really open lines of communications, where we talk about incidents that have occurred at establishments, ways to prevent them, ways to mitigate it, and ways that we can partner to make sure that we're impacting these things in a positive way. The education piece, our LEEDs program, where we educate our staff about over-service and things that can be impacted by folks within locations with responsible beverage service. Our Peninsula stakeholders, we meet regularly, and we hear from folks about what these issues are and how we can impact them together and how we can mitigate quality-of-life impacts if they should occur with our businesses, particularly in West Newport is where we deal with the most of these, the majority of these numbers. But in addition to the communication piece, to the education piece, I mean, there's also the accountability piece, and that's the licensing compliance operations that we do. And we have, we've had eight so far this year, these licensing, accountability, and compliance operations. These are ones that we're doing undercover operations where we're monitoring over-service, minor decoy type of operations, and we get some good compliance, for the most part, with our establishments. And when we don't, there's appropriate accountability there, but we also have staff that takes lessons, learns here, and is able to follow up with these businesses and make sure that we're serving alcohol responsibly. So 35% down in aggravated assaults is something we're encouraged.
Excuse me, John?
Yes, sir.
Chief, thank you. Just, I'll ask a couple of questions because a lot of these things happen in my district. First of all, I want to thank you and certainly commend you for the stakeholder meetings and the Tavern and Bar Association meetings, and a special shout-out to our tavern owners who've been working with you, and I know that they feel it's a very constructive and cooperative relationship. On the training or the ABC, I remember, recall, in the last several years, the city, your department, has received a grant from ABC to do some deeper dives into some of the establishments and ensure compliance. Are we still getting that grant?
We applied for it. We didn't receive it this year, but these are still operations that we work irrespective of receiving the grant funding. These are still things that we have a presence out there in our ABC licensed establishments. It helps to have the grant funding that we can do some things on over time to augment our efforts, but we're still doing them regardless of whether or not. We didn't receive the grant this year. We have in the past, and we're going to continue to apply for it. So it's just, it's a matter of priorities for the state in terms of how they see that funding being distributed.
Okay, one other thing that comes up in our stakeholder meetings and the barn tavern meetings on how they're cooperating with one another, are you going to talk a minute about this communication that they do amongst themselves?
That's something that's, and I can absolutely, and that's, what's happened now is now that this communication where we've sort of broke down some barriers and really even between establishments in West Newport, where they're communicating and understanding that there's a problem group that's at one location, it's advantageous to everyone within the area to know about this problem group. And so now it's not one, you know, one group is creating, you know, issues from place to place to place, they move along. So that's evolved from the phone calls to staff and talking to each other and communicating to now a, to an app that's being used by a number of these locations where they're able to communicate with each other. And again, these are things that are really encouraging for us, and these are things that our businesses have taken on themselves to help impact these problems that they have with their establishments. So those are, those are things that have really been born by this collaboration.
Well, good, thank you, and I know you are. And thanks, a special shout-out to Wendy Jo, who's been doing a great job.
She does a fantastic job, she does.
Thank you.
We'll talk about burglary next, and we have some good trend line here with 14 and a half, nearly 15% down in burglary. Now, this is residential and commercial that we're talking about here. And this slide here, just to give you an visual about, while we're seeing a good number here for us with residential and commercial burglaries being down, this is, it really is a regional issue, and this is one that we have to keep vigilance towards and really keep our, you know, keep our foot on the gas in terms of our efforts out there impacting this. And so we have these, just for sake of visual discussion, is those are wanted bulletins and flyers and arrest bulletins from just from the past couple of weeks, just in the county of residential and commercial burglary, and that's just a stack of them that came from Caroline's desk, to just give you an idea of what the problem is that we're dealing with regionally. So we're pleased to see that we're trending in this direction so far the first half of the year, but again, this is a regional problem, and it's one that we can't take our eyes off in any way. So if you bear with me for my value-added here public safety message, because I know that there's people that are, that need to hear this, and it's something we all need to be reminded to, burglars are not always what you may think. You know, people have this idea that, you know, a burglar with a stocking cap and the dark clothes, and you just never know, all right? We need to, we need to report things in our neighborhoods and our businesses that we just don't, if we think something is wrong, if we see something, then say something, call our non-emergency line, it is up there. 911 is always appropriate in these things. And again, if we see things that are out of place, things that bother us, I always tell folks, just give us the opportunity to investigate. We have highly-trained professionals that are going to come out and look into this, and if it ends up being that it's nothing to be concerned about, then it's just not something to be concerned about, and we'll move on. But we would prefer to have the opportunity to do that. Trust your intuition, trust your feelings. Some of the things that we see here, and one in particular is paper-plated vehicles. This is something common in our, that we see particularly with these organized burglary crews that are impacting our neighborhoods, and the use of these paper plates to obscure their, to obscure their identity and affect these types of crimes. So some things to watch out for again, always trust your instincts and give us the opportunity to investigate when it comes to these things, but good trend line for burglary so far this year.
Excuse me, John?
Yes, sir.
Mayor Protem?
So Chief, without jumping on a future item, are you going to talk about vacation checks?
I absolutely am. I'd love to talk about that. Something that the Newport Beach Police Department does that there really aren't a lot of police departments that do, and this is just, it's a community program where our volunteers in policing will, if you're going to be gone for a couple of weeks, you can call our police station and say, hey, I'm going to be gone. I've stopped the newspaper, but the gardener's going to be here, the landscapers are going to be here. Can you keep an eye on our place? And our volunteers will, as part of, as part of their rounds, go out and check. And you'd be surprised the types of things that, you know, people sometimes, they leave a door open on their way out, or there's the different types of mailers and things like that that can accumulate. They will come by and they will check on your house, and then it's also good information for us to know too, if there was something in the neighborhood where a neighborhood would call, or neighbor would call and say, hey, I think there's something going on over at this house. We log that information in our computer-rated dispatch system, and then our officers know, oh, my gosh, the O'Neills are out of town, and we wouldn't expect anybody to be in that house. So that's something we always encourage people to do, and thank you for the opportunity for me to talk about that. It's something we're pretty proud of and something that we also think is a great benefit to the community.
Chief, one other thing, I'll just note, I'll note this because last night I spent about an hour, hour and a half up in Pelican Hill HOA with Lieutenant Keith Crollman, who's been a fantastic area fore-lieutenant, so I appreciate his time up there speaking with the HOA. They've had a few break-ins, and so he and I were up there talking about various things that the city's doing proactively, and also we mentioned vacation. One other thing I pointed out to the folks up there that I, it's worth noting for folks at home, if you go to the Newport Beach Police Department website, which is NVPD.org, you can also, you can find the information on the, on what the chief just talked about on the vacation checks. You can also get a free, I'm going to blank on what it's called there, Chief, it's Home Security Inspection, and so I'd like to make sure that folks know that as well when they're trying to determine how to, how to make their home safer.
Home security inspections are, that's another service that we offer through our, through our Crime Prevention, our Community Relations Unit, and that's, we'll come out and we'll take a look at your house and provide, there's always things that are changing to help us secure our houses, and we have experts that will come out and take a look and, you know, provide some different solutions and really give you an idea about where you could be weak and where you could make some improvements in your residence, just to make it a little bit more secure. So those are things we offer and absolutely through our website or through, we can just call our Community Relations Office, and we'll be happy to set those things up. I want to talk real briefly about the red here, and that's auto theft, and this is a relatively small number here when you look at our overall crime picture, but it is up, and so I think it was one that's important for us to address as well. So we're looking at 71 crimes here as opposed to 66 last year, so for an increase of 7.6%. And what auto theft looks like here in Newport Beach, we talked during the planning session in January about how 39% of our vehicles stolen in 2017 were, there was a key involved. I mean, a key involved, this is a hide-a-key, it's a key that's left in the vehicle, those types of things. So I was hopeful that we were going to see some improvement, and we have. We've seen 3% improvement now, so now we're down to 36 of auto theft so far this year have a key involved. I think we can do better than that, and a lot of it is just, it's an education piece, it's being vigilant, and it's just, you know, making our, the opportunity a little bit, a little bit more difficult for folks that are going to, that are going to target us. So that's something I want to point out, most of our auto thefts, not most of them, but 36% so far this year involved a key. And just for interest here, I thought you'd be interested in seeing where we actually recover these stolen vehicles, and for the most part, it's Orange County. We catch a lot of them here within the city limits themselves, Santa Ana, Huntington, Costa Mesa, and Westminster. So for the most part, our stolen vehicles are recovered.
Excuse me, John, again.
Could you just clarify, when you say a key is involved, do you mean an electronic key has been duplicated illegally or something?
No, no, the actual key, the hide-a-key, the key, the actual key of the vehicle.
Oh, oh, they've located a hidden key?
Yes, or it's left unlocked, or you'd be surprised how many times folks leave.
I see, so the owner's key is involved, I see, okay.
And then our most stolen vehicles here, and this is just for information for, I guess if you have a trivia question sometime, if you want to know what the most stolen vehicles are, and this is, this is pretty typical for the region here, the Toyota Camry in Tacoma are ones that we see, the Chevrolet Silverado in Tahoe, and the Ford F-250 are the ones that we see, the top, the top ones stolen here in Newport Beach. So we'll get to the bottom line here, and this is Part I crime. Again, close to 16% down for the year, and arrests are up 3.1%, and we'll take a look at what this looks like overall, over five years. So those are our trend lines here. These are historic lows in Part I crime, and you can see from the bar graph there, so we're at 966 total, which those actual number of crimes as it relates to other jurisdictions is, that number itself is a, is a pretty good number when you're looking at it overall in comparison to the region, but we see ourselves historic down from 17, 16, 15. You look at 2014, 2014 was an interesting year where crime was down across the country, but 2013 was probably more in line with what we've seen in the trends of the five-year average, and we're down significantly from that as well. So that's, that's really encouraging when you look at that. And I also think when you look at Part I crime and how we track that and how we look at that in terms of our community, we have, we look at for our crime rates with our census population being at about 87,000 is the number that we use, but, and I know that Mr. Sherwin and his team is going to talk to you a little bit about our average daily visitor volume. Now, we're looking at about 20,000 average daily visitor volume in Newport Beach. That takes our actual population up significantly more than what you would see just by using the census data. And we also see with our visitor population too, is there are organized groups that will try to target this, target this population. A lot of times it's the distraction thefts or the pickpockets and things like that. So that being said, with our population and really significant visitor volume that adds value to our city in many ways, we're, these historic lows, I think, are definitely worthy of note. And then we look at our arrests here, again, our arrests are up over last year with the 3.1%, and you look over the five-year average, so we go back to 2014. Now, that's a little bit down again, that was a lower number for, lower year for Part I crime, but our arrests were also significantly down that year as well. But we're looking at our numbers pretty consistent from 16, 17, and 18 with our increase in arrests by our folks out there. And I will leave you, before we get to questions, with our, with our traffic snapshot here, and there's some interesting numbers here to look at. We, our fatal collisions, we, it's a 0%, but that we didn't have zero fatal collisions. We had, mid-year, we had two versus two last year, and we just had one over the weekend. So that's, these are ones I'd like to be able to have zeros every year. Unfortunately, we've had three so far this year. The ones that are encouraging to me is we look at our pedestrian fatalities, pedestrian injuries, and our bicyclist injuries, and those are all down. Pedestrian injuries are down 40%, bicyclist injuries down 27%, and these are things that I think we are starting to see of some of the various infrastructure improvements that we've seen, the crosswalks and making things safer for pedestrians and bicycles out there. I think some of our education enforcement efforts are impacting these numbers. These are good numbers, they're encouraging, and I think there's a lot we're starting to see now. Some of the investment that we made in these areas actually showing up in the numbers, which is, which is a really good thing. Our DUI arrests, so we talked about alcohol again, and I don't want to leave this slide without talking about DUI arrests, so we're up 3%. We have, we've made 241 DUI arrests to this point this year as opposed to 234 last year. There's a number of different, I mean, it's almost part of daily life now, these different ride-sharing services and things like that that are available. We're still seeing our DUI arrests as something that our folks are making on a regular basis, and so we're going to continue to be out there, we're going to continue to impact this, but we're still seeing that number probably trend in a direction that we would like to not necessarily see it at, particularly in light of all the other options that are out there for folks to get home safely. Our top collision locations, the Jamboree Corridor, this is one that we see, and Jamboree and San Joaquin, Jamboree and University, the primary collision factors are listed here. The majority for the Jamboree Corridor is speed, and this is something that our folks are out there impacting regularly, but those are our primary collision factors for those two intersections. Coast Highway and Baboa Superior Highway, this is one high-volume intersection, and our primary collision factors are really across the board on that one, DUI, unsafe turn right away. And then Coast Highway and Iris, this is a new one for us, and this one, two of these collisions were DUI-related, so it was interesting for that one to pop, but again, it's Pacific Coast Highway, it's a highly-traveled roadway, but that one was one of the newer ones that we've, that we've seen here in terms of overall top collision locations within the city. And with that, I'm sure I've gone over my time, so I'd be happy to answer questions.
Councilwoman Dixon?
Thank you, Mayor. Just back to your previous slide on the traffic, if you would, please. How do these compare to prior year?
What we've seen in prior years, this is, this is pretty consistent. I mean, it is. There, these ones in these specific locations here are ones that we've had, it's not unusual to see them pop on our top collision locations. Now, the ones, what's interesting so far this year is we had seen Newport Coast and the Highway and Jamboree and the Highway has been top collision intersections over last year. There's a number, I just added the four here that we had seven each and six each for this slide, but there's a handful of other ones that we've had, you know, within four or five collisions at that are sort of tied, but those are the, but those are in line with what we've seen in years past.
Just a couple of questions. So we've received, we on the council have received some letters from citizens, residents, suggesting that our traffic safety visibility is not what it should be or what it has been. Do you want to comment on that and how we are patrolling our key corridors?
I think we have a lot of traffic movements in the city, and I think that we are, we are impacting it, and what we do is we have to be smart about it, and we look at, and we're studying this data, and we're studying these trends, and we're looking at these intersections, and that's where we're, where we're managing our resources to. And so I, we have, we are fortunate to have a contingent of motor officers that are highly productive and that are in tune to these numbers, and this is something that they pay attention to on a regular basis. But when I look at collision locations, when I, when I see things like speed, I think that there's, that can be impacted by enforcement, and that's something we continue to do. But what we have to do now is we look at these, but in addition to these collision intersections that we're, that we're working, there's a number of other areas that are, that we have responsibility for as well. The schools being one of them, I know that we, that we hear quite a bit of concerns about traffic as it relates to schools, so we balance it on where we see our most pressing needs and we prioritize our resources accordingly.
Well, I do recall, if memory serves me correctly, during our budget process, you had recommended two additional motorcycle officers, and we polled it for cost-control reasons, the right reasons, and you also had some openings and unfilled positions, so there was some, had some margin to fill that out. Do you see this as a problem going forward? I mean, I foresee more collisions, more accidents, and I, you know the stories, I'm not going to surprise you, that just on Sundays, there's just a lot of people enjoying Coast Highway on a beautiful summer Sunday, and some of the car clubs and motorcycle clubs are enjoying a breeze through Coast Highway, and unfortunately, they run into a stoplight every now and then, and they have to stop, and then they rev off. You know, you can't be everywhere, I'm not being critical, it's just that I think, as you just said, 20,000 average daily visitors a day, we have a lot of people on our streets, and it's hard to be everywhere, but I'm, I guess now that we're getting some letters from residents, I'm starting to pay a little bit more attention to this.
I agree. I think it's something we can always, that we need to continue to keep as an emphasis because we are, I mean, we're an international destination, we see a lot of folks in town and with them, probably sometimes not necessarily the best driving habits, but frankly, we see that from some of our residents too. So it's, it's something that we can, that we can continue to, to impact, but I definitely think it's something we need to continue to focus on, yes, ma'am.
All right, and one other thing, shifting gears from traffic, Lido Bridge, our bridges, and you're familiar with this current problem, it's probably a social media-generated phenomenon, but we're seeing more and more young people, I don't see old people, so I see young people on the bridges jumping, and I see it every day on weekends, and even today is a Tuesday on Lido Bridge, and I know you're out there, and I call dispatch. Do you want to just make a comment for community's benefit of what we're trying to do to aggressively protect our residents and boat owners who happen to be, there was an accident this afternoon where a jumper landed on a Duffy, and I, you could speak to that because I know you know the facts. So I think we have an emerging issue here that, what would you suggest we're going to be doing about it?
We have municipal codes that prohibit it, frankly, bridge jumping, and it's not, it's a Lido Bridge, but we've seen it on others, Baboa Island is one of them, and I think it's one of these things that it's been, it's sort of been a rite of passage type of situation over years here in our community, but the reality is, is when we have things that happen like that happened today, and fortunately, there weren't any serious, serious injuries, but our harbor's busy. We have a lot of things that are, that are moving underneath these, a lot of boats moving under these bridges, and we have kids that it's a, it's a fun thing to do, or perceived as a fun thing to do during the, during the summertime months. However, these types of poor decision-making can end up, you know, ruining your day, like this is what happened today, very quickly, and can cause some serious injuries. So it's something that I think that we need to take seriously. I think, I think our, our folks need to talk to our kids too and say, hey, this is something that, okay, well, maybe it was, you know, something that we had done in the past, but it's not necessarily a good idea in general, and it's dangerous, and we need, we are going to be out there, we receive calls regularly, and we respond to these calls for service as it relates to jumpers off the bridges, not just Lido, but there are other ones that we've seen this problem as well, and, and we'll issue citations as appropriate, absolutely. There are municipal codes on the book, and these are bases for citations to be issued, absolutely, ma'am.
Councilman Avery?
Yeah, I'm just curious about the crime stats for 2014. Is it just a random dip, or was there something else going on?
Well, Caroline is actually going to be doing her doctoral thesis on 2014 and why we saw those, why we saw those crime numbers. It was, it's really unusual to see a number drip like that or drop that way, so there's, but it was, again, it was nationwide, you know, and it was, it was not consistent with what we'd seen and what we've seen going forward. So there's some theories out there, but, you know, for the most part, it's really not representative of what we're, of what we have seen and what we've, what we've seen going forward.
Sun flare, something like that?
I wish I knew, because if I could bottle it, right, and figure it out, I would, I'd be pretty well-received, I would think, with my next crime stat presentation.
Thank you.
Good for you.
Yes, sir, I'm, any more questions, I will be happy to.
Yes, we have more questions. Councilman Muldoon?
Thank you, Chief. We have a reputation in our, for Newport Beach Police Department, being one of the finest departments in the state. Do you have any numbers comparing our successful efforts to thwart crime in Newport Beach versus other communities in the state, the state as a whole, or perhaps just neighboring communities?
We can look at neighboring communities, and we do, and our numbers historically with our population and our crime rate are, they're, they're small numbers, frankly, you know, when you see our, when you see our neighboring jurisdictions. So I can tell you, for example, I have to, I have to go back to 2016 numbers because those are the ones that, 2017, believe it or not, has that actually been. it was 5,000 for the year of 2016. So you have 5,000 Part I crimes in Costa Mesa, and you look, in Newport Beach, we had 2,300 crimes. So, you know, less than, less than half, you know, were of actual Part I crimes. So that's the difference that you see. And when you look at our, at our population numbers, you look at Costa Mesa for that year, they had census numbers of 113,000 overall. And again, ours going back to about the 87,000 plus our visitor population. So I think our crime rate is good, is very good, comparable to other jurisdictions, similar issues, similar environment that we operate in.
Well, I definitely have to agree with you. I would like to note, I believe I've heard that many property crimes are up in the state, perhaps due to 57 and 47, and Sacramento poor decisions, but in Newport Beach, we're actually seeing a drop in property crime. So if that is true, that means our police department is successfully bucking the trend that's seen throughout the state of California. Does that sound accurate?
That's absolutely accurate. And again, it's, I think we have amazing police officers that do good proactive police work, and we also have an understanding of data and what the numbers tell us and how to deploy our resources effectively. But again, a lot of this is just good police work by good police officers.
Well, I'd like to say job well done to you and to all the men and women in your department. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Pro Tim O'Neill.
Yeah, Chief, to echo that, these are shockingly good numbers. I mean, when I've stood in front of some of the communities up in Newport Coast area, Spyglass area, the comments have always come that one is too many, and your department has taken that ethos and applied it. And so we're seeing the effects of that, and we're also seeing the effects of an engaged community where we are making sure that we've empowered our residents to continue to have access to our police department, have access to the resources, and have access to making their communities safer. So kudos, Chief. I mean, this is, oftentimes, cities frankly are judged on how well they maintain the safety of their communities, and you're getting an A+ here. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment? Seeing none, we go out to the public. Would the public like to make any comments?
Mayor Duffield, members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Chief Lewis, like Councilwoman Dixon briefly mentioned the large, the city's large volume of tourists and visitors that we have, and which we're, in a different way, going to hear more about in a moment. One statistic I didn't hear was the fraction of the arrests, crimes, or citations that are issued that involve visitors to Newport Beach, non-residents versus residents, and how that compares to previous years. I think it would be an interesting statistic to know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. I'd like to express my thanks as well. I believe, unfortunately, the citizens of Newport Beach pretty much expect you to do what you do, and I think in other cities, they'd have a parade if you had these numbers. But you chose us, so, but thank you, and great job. Keep it up. Councilwoman Dixon.
Well, this is police appreciation evening, so I, too, want to echo. And particularly, I know my District One places a lot of demands, and we get a lot of support, and I know the residents and business owners are very grateful, and for the last four years, we've really made a conscious effort to work together with your staff, as I mentioned, Wendy, Joe particularly, and with our data that you provide, too. I appreciate that. And it's just, we're just dealing with this, with your fine services in a more informed and deliberate way, and we're creating a safer community, and so I appreciate that. So, thank you, and thank you for taking me on my ride-alongs. When I rode with you on the Fourth of July several hours and said goodbye at 6:30 or 7:00 PM, little did I know that you still, you started with the Balboa Parade at 8:00 AM, and you ended your day at, what, midnight? I think so.
It was a long day, but it's the Fourth of July in Newport Beach, so.
So, thank you.
Lots of coffee.
Job well done. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, John. Great job. All right. Next up, we have the Newport Beach and Company Visit Newport Annual Report, which I'm going to recuse myself because I have business dealings with Visit Newport.
We're going to take just a minute, too, to switch a computer out for the presentation.
I'm Debbie Snavely, the General Manager at the Newport Beach Marriott Hotel and Spa, and I'm also the Chairperson of Newport Beach and Company and the Newport Beach Tourism Business Improvement District Board of Directors. Since our time together this afternoon will be brief, I will be brief, too. It is our pleasure to present to you our annual report on our activities and results. Our President and CEO, Gary Sherwin, will be providing this information in just a minute. And before Gary comes up, I do want to take time to acknowledge our incredible Executive Committee, many of whom are with us today. First is Homer Bloudow, our Vice Chair, who, as you know, was the former City Manager. Candy Biscante, our treasure from Access Destinations. Linda Beimfor, our Board Secretary from Hornblower Cruises and Events. Russ Klein, our Member-at-Large from American Express. Sam Elraba, Member-at-Large from the Balboa Bay Resort. And Doug Wood, your appointee to our Executive Committee. You can see on your screen that we are also joined by a superb Board of Directors that represents a wide array of business interests throughout Newport Beach and Orange County. Let me assure you that your trust is well-placed with this organization. It is well-run with strong metrics, solid financial oversight, and is creative and entrepreneurial. This year's performance is one for the record books, with this organization delivering a new high in room night bookings and economic impact. The work of this organization is the force that drives our local economy and is a key indispensable asset to all of us that depend on it to deliver business that we cannot do alone. Thank you for your continued support as we continue to work together through a public and private endeavor to bring more visitors to Newport Beach, and by doing so, increase your transient occupancy tax collections. Thank you. And now, here's Gary.
Thank you, Deb. Members of the City Council, it is a pleasure to once again come before you for our annual report. And let me first start off by saying that it is a deep honor to represent this community and tell its story to the world. It is something that our entire team takes very seriously. We're immensely proud, immensely proud of this community, and the chance to go and talk to people from other countries as well as around the United States and tell them what a very special place this is. And invariably, every one of them, when they come, they always leave saying, wow, what an amazing place. I have yet to meet anybody, and maybe all of you as well, who have come visiting Newport Beach and haven't left unbelievably awed by its beauty, its infrastructure, its hospitality, and its people. Now, normally, I would start off and give you a lot of statistics and data, and I'll give you that in just a little bit, but I thought maybe we'd start out with something a little bit more fun and entertaining, and that is to talk a little bit about some of the efforts that we do, particularly internationally. Now, our international guests come from these primary markets, now includes China, Middle East, United Kingdom. We're going to be starting a new effort in Canada. We get a little over 350,000 visitors, which, if you look at our 7 million, looks like a relatively small number, except for the fact that these are guests that, one, they use LAX, and when they arrive, they tend to stay for extended lengths of time. So we have many of our Middle East guests that will stay for 30 days. They will bring their extended families. They will bring their staffs. International guests, not only do they stay longer, they spend more, they go to our retail operations and eat out more often. So it's an effort that we place a lot of effort in because of that high-quality spend. Now, one of the efforts that we began about four years ago is a partnership with the Newport Beach Film Festival, and the United Kingdom continues to be one of our strongest and most productive markets. And we began this effort with the Film Festival to really kind of find a creative way to tell our story in a market that almost every city, certainly here in California and throughout the country, all want to have a presence in. Everyone wants to make a statement in London, and you can kind of get lost in the noise. So we thought, how can we break out? How can we do something a little different? So we decided to do some guerrilla marketing, and you may have heard of the BAFTAs, they're the equivalent of the British Oscars. We decided, how about if we go in and do an event at the BAFTAs? And that was four years ago. And out of that, we came up with a program where we would host a party on Thursday night before the BAFTAs, and it started with the imitation game, and starred Benedict Cumberbatch and Keira Knightley, who came to our event. And again, this is sponsored by us and the Newport Beach Film Festival. You'll see there's a truck there. We actually turned it also into a Newport Beach experience by, inside of that truck was an entire recreation of the city. You could take a selfie at Crystal Cove. We parked out all over the city. It was a great way to launch our effort there. We continued it second year with the film Brooklyn. Last year, there was a film called I, Daniel Blake. It was about the British healthcare system, which you may think is incredibly boring, and so did I, until I saw the film. It actually was kind of interesting, went on to win a BAFTA Best British Film. And earlier this year, we did an event honoring the film The Darkest Hour. What was a big game changer for us is that Variety Magazine, which is the bible of the entertainment industry, said, we want to partner with you, and we want to co-host this event, and create 10 Brits to watch. And out of that, that allowed us to not only get more celebrity talent, but allowed us to get more media. And one of the days that we're involved in, I'm on the radio with the editor of Variety, and you can see that's what I do on Wednesday, for eight hours. The editor of Variety Magazine, Steve Gatos, and I are in a little radio booth, and we talk with radio stations literally all over the country. We also do an event with the UK media, which we did at a blow-dry bar. There's a lot of women who are in that business, so it made a good deal of sense. Then we go after the travel trade. We did that, partnered with McLaren. They gave us their showroom in Knightsbridge. We brought them in for a media event. Then we do our event on Thursday, and then, of course, we have a partnership with HMV, which is sort of the Amazon of the UK, where we do online contests. They also have stores where we promote Newport Beach as well. And then, of course, the BAFTAs are on Sunday. So this is a little bit of a recap of the event itself.
For over 19 years, the Newport Beach Film Festival have honored key UK talent and creative industries, and tonight, we're bringing all of that here to London to recognize and reward those people and organizations, institutions that we feel warrant that.
Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the 2018 UK Honors.
We are pleased to host tonight with our partners at the Newport Beach Film Festival, the fastest-growing festival in America, now in its 19th year, as well as with Variety and HMV. So this evening, we're thrilled to honor and recognize some truly great British film icons, film companies, and up-and-coming British entertainment talent.
Ladies and gentlemen, Sir Patrick Stewart.
It is a touch serendipitous, because I was actually in Newport Beach less than 48 hours ago. Oh, yes. Not for a facelift, or any kind of plastic surgery, but thank you very much. I am delighted to be here and to receive this award.
19 years ago, when we were sitting down thinking about how we put everything together, it would be unimaginable to think about an evening like this for us then. So I can say thank you, thank you to Gary and the team at Visit Newport Beach. Thank you to Paul and HMV. Thank you, Steve, and the team at Variety, DDA, everyone, for all of their help bringing this together. It truly exceeds all of our expectations.
To our honorees, thank you for the amazing work that you do, for our enjoyment that creates better insight into the worlds all around us. Thank you. We hope to see you at the Film Festival, the 19th edition, this April. And now, the party begins. Have a great time, everybody.
Now, out of this, we collect a lot of different metrics on it, obviously keeping track of the media that we attract, as well as print impression, the radio interviews that we do, so that we can continue to monitor our exposure. It is a wonderfully cost-efficient way for us to leverage our message and tell our story in a creative way during a time of year where the media really want to pay attention to us, because if we went in there and said, hey, we want to talk about tourism, they'd say, stand in line with everyone else. But the fact that we can kind of connect ourselves with the entertainment industry, which we have deep roots in, of course, going back with John Wayne and such, that makes, that gives us a lot of credibility. We have continued to forge a really great partnership with Variety, and again, it cannot be underestimated the influence of that publication in the entertainment industry. We have a number of hotels that go after the entertainment market, Pelican Hill being a notable one. We have been doing this event now, will be going into 2019 with our 10 Brits to Watch again in London. And then during the Film Festival, Variety also hosts an event called the 10 Cinematographers to Watch. What I'm happy to announce today, first time publicly, is that on the road to the Oscars, there are several events that lead up to the evening of the Oscars. The very first event is Variety's 10 Actors to Watch. This is when Variety acknowledges the 10 actors who are likely to be nominated, ultimately go on to win Academy Awards. Subsequently, they go on to the Golden Globes and Screen Actors Awards and all of that. It gets a lot of coverage. That event has been in New York City. That event will be moving from New York City to Newport Beach this November, will be hosted at Pelican Hill. Worked really hard to make that one happen. It'll be a high-profile event for all of us and get a lot of attention because, again, it is connected with the Oscars. So it is a wonderful partnership, and it's because Variety believes in our destination, and they love being able to work with us. So let me get into a little bit about some of the other things that we're involved in, and I always put this up every year, and this is our brand promise, because this answers the fundamental question on how do we market this city? How do we kind of tell that story? This brand promise is internal. We always share it with you, because while we tell the story, you create the story. This is a partnership with the public sector to say, listen, we're selling an experience, a very unique, special experience, and we believe we capture the essence of the city in that brand promise, and all of our marketing efforts kind of are circulated around those words. But you create those experiences by taking care of the city in such an exceptional way, and I want to commend the city staff as well as all of you for your wise investments in keeping us the premier destination. Infrastructure counts. Infrastructure is important not only to our residents but to our visitors as well, because when people come here, they know they're experiencing a different kind of place. And that experience is what we convey in all of our ads. So we're going to show you a little of some of our print ads, and our, this ad program is put together by our Senior Vice President of Marketing, Doug McLean, who's over there working the computer. And you can see, we use a lot of the assets. We use here Marina Park as part of our ad program. We use the Shake Shack. We go out into the harbor, tell the story, and we even use Fashion Island. And you can see, we kind of make it slightly quirky, a little bit funny. We like to try to catch eyeballs. Advertising tends to blur because of so much of it looks the same, and we kind of want to make it just a little bit different. So here's one of our TV spots, so you can kind of see how all of this comes together.
There is a place where romance and adventure share the same passion, where togetherness sets itself superbly apart, where lux and laid-back are equally alluring, and the fun knows precisely where and when to stop. Newport Beach, journey well beyond.
So you can see, we kind of play off some of So you can see, we kind of play off some of the... A little bit of humor, a little quirkiness, as well as that aspirational lifestyle that we love to talk about. So in terms of measuring our leisure guests, these are visitors who come here just for vacations. It is difficult to measure every single person who maybe sees an ad and goes on Travelocity and books a room night. So what we do is, we measure our campaigns. So it's very specific. They're all measured by an independent third party. Our goal on the leisure side of things was 61,200. Right now, we're at 52. We are currently finishing up the analysis of our spring campaign, which will be ready for us next month, and we expect to go over those numbers. Again, I would love to measure every single visitor that comes through here, but I want to make sure that anything we report to you, we can defend and measure and quantify, and this is one way we try to do that. So here's kind of an outlook on where we are from a industry perspective right now. Times are good in California. It's good around the nation. You can see businesses up across the board in a lot of different areas. Average daily rate is continuing to grow, and the state is experiencing a $130 billion visitor industry spend right now. One of the things I think is also interesting is, times are good, but then times can be really good. And in our case, our rates are the highest in Orange County. As you can see, 60% than the average daily rate of all the other cities combined. So we are outperforming, and we're doing pretty well in that area. This goes to show you a little bit of how we're doing on rev... Our average daily rate, as well as occupancy. And as you can see, the rate continues to grow. We had a little bit of a dip, and that was really due to the fact that we had two hotels that were out for major renovations, which includes the new Renaissance, formerly Fairmont, as well as the Radisson, now Hyatt Regency-John Wayne Airport. So we expect that purple line to correct this year, and adding Lido House is going to help as well. So let me get into group sales a little bit, and this is what is funded entirely by the T-Bid and the T-Bid member hotels. And that budget is roughly about $4.3 million a year. We have about eight people who work in our sales department, and their goal was to get us to 83,000 room nights. Now, mind you, this is on an inventory of about 4,000 rooms. They way over-delivered on goal, much to the pleasure of our hotel board members, and brought in over 90,000 group room nights. And as you can see, we break it down in terms of 184 groups that are brand-new to the city. About 171 we were able to keep here in the city. And our group business is kind of the bedrock business of the hotel industry. Without group, we just can't physically and financially make our goals. This gives you kind of a historical lineage of where we stand in terms of overall room night production. This year was one for the record books, as Debbie indicated. Last year, we were down slightly, and again, that was due to the two hotels that were under renovation. But you can see, we've been all trending up, and our goal is even higher this year, because that's kind of what is expected of us, and that's what we're going to do. So this gives you a little bit, again, idea of how the performance was for the community in terms of group room nights, as well as hotel economic impact. So of that $4.3 million, generated over $25 million in business directly to the hotels. But we know that our guests just don't stay at hotels. They eat in restaurants, they shop, they rent cars, they spend a lot of money through the community. So we measure overall economic impact, and this year, we're over almost $63 million in total economic impact. And this is a number that we can tangibly measure, both on the group and leisure side. So I would say this is fairly conservative number, because again, we don't track all of our leisure guests, we only track them on campaigns. But we do track every one, a single one of those conventions that we do book. So you can see, the return on investment's pretty sizable, if you look at the total economic impact versus what the hotels agree to assess themselves for the purpose of the T-Bid. So if you add up what we booked on leisure and what we booked on group, the total room nights that we generate were 143,318, which is roughly 20% of all the rooms that are sold in the city of Newport Beach on a given year. If you look at the total economic impact, both leisure and group, this organization contributed $83.2 million to this city's economic vitality, which we're, again, very proud of. So let me also talk about some of the other aspects of the... of what we do. And again, I'm moving quickly, because I know my time is limited today, so if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them afterwards. Of course, we continue to provide all the marketing support for the Christmas Boat Parade in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce. We're very proud of that. That event continues to grow, and we continue to get more media coverage for it. We also provide that marketing support for a couple of your specific districts, Balboa Village, as well as Balboa Island. We provide the graphic support. Those creative icons were created by our design team. They tend to be very special event-oriented, and Doug and his marketing group have been superb in helping manage and try to take a little bit of money and try to generate a lot of value for them. Also, the Newport Beach Restaurant Association, that organization, that is a great success story. And where we've really seen the growth is that now we are at 93% of bid collections. Historically, that number was down between 60 and 70%. We took over the marketing efforts a few years ago, and then, of course, as you know, we took over the financial management of that group, and we are now enforcing more collections. But I think the other great story is that the restaurants want to participate, because if you don't pay your bid assessment, you don't get to participate in Restaurant Week. And that now has become a huge success, with over 6,500 Restaurant Week reservations. As you can see, total impressions, so more restaurants want to continue to get involved and partake in it. And so we're getting very close to almost full compliance of all of our restaurants, and that's almost 450 or so. So we're very happy about that. I want to leave you with a little bit of a synopsis here of what we continue to do with Newport Beach TV. There's always more. We envisioned with this to do even more creative programming, but we wanted to give you a little bit of a synopsis of what we've been able to do in terms of the programming, not only for the purposes here of the city, but also telling the greater Newport Beach story. Again, that gives you just a little bit of a sampling of what we've been trying to do. We want to be able to do more. I know Councilman Pieter and I have talked about other things that we can do to enhance our program. We certainly want to try to be able to do that as well. Finally, I wanted to leave you with this note as well, and that is, now we're in summer, our visitors are here during high season, the streets do get a little bit more crowded. But we also like to say that our visitors contribute to the economic vitality of this community in a very significant way. And that is, if we didn't have our visitors here, to keep Newport Beach government services flowing at the very same levels that they're enjoying right now, taxes would have to go up over $1,100 per household in order to sustain the quality that our community likes to enjoy. And then in addition to that, if you like your restaurants, you like all the stores, you like the amenities we have, without our visitors, you'd have to spend almost $44,000 per household to keep those level of services. When you're talking with about as many stores and as many restaurants as we have, that's a lot of seats, that's a lot of stores that need traffic. Our visitors help play a very significant role in keeping the financial health of this community up and keeping taxes low. So with that, I wanted to, again, thank you very much for all of your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Again, I also want to thank our executive committee. Their leadership is tremendously valued by our staff. They put in a lot of time every single month to review our financials, review our programs, make sure that we're doing what we need to be able to do. And again, I want to thank all of them, particularly those, again, that are here, as well as our full board and all of you, for all your support for our organization, as well as our industry.
Thank you very much, Gary. Ms. Dixon.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Potem. Congratulations, another economically successful year. As I've looked at these numbers before, I just want to remind the public, if I... I'm sure if Dan M. is here, the budget numbers are, of course, correct. I think we net out $23.7 million in top-line revenues, which is about 11% of our total general fund. So that's significant. You mentioned in one of your slides about where people are coming from, and you specifically said they land at LAX, not surprisingly, because they're international travelers. Do you have any data specifically of the percentage of visitors who are... You're calculating here in your statistics, who actually did arrive at LAX versus John Wayne? Do you happen to have that information?
I don't have the specific data point, but I just... I wanted to add a point of clarification on that, and that is that the vast majority of our visitors who come to Newport Beach do not use John Wayne Airport. We have a lot of people out of that 7.3 who are day-trippers, who come, they enjoy our beaches, they go shopping, they eat, turn around, go back home. We also spend a lot of money marketing in Las Vegas, Palm Springs, Phoenix, and these are people who drive in and will spend their time, turn around, and go back. And of course, we have the international guests that use LAX, because we don't have direct flight service. So the vast majority of our visitors are not using the airport. But the airport is important to us. Certainly, when it comes to the group meeting industry, I don't want to diminish the importance of that at all. It's very important for us to be able to use that airport as a competitive advantage, because a lot of cities don't have a quality facility for that. But if you look at the totality of our visitors, they're mostly drive-in visitors.
Well, and I think that's important, because obviously, we're dealing with some airport sensitivity issues, and we all enjoy the convenience of it. But if we are aggressively marketing for people to come to Newport Beach, the fact that we have a nearby international airport in Los Angeles has offset some of the impacts that would affect the community. I want to thank you for the good work you do and what Doug does from a marketing standpoint. You really are a top-notch, and I think... I know it does add value. The 29 or 20,000 additional daily visitors, is that part of the numbers that you capture as well? Does that... Do those calibrate with what you know?
It is. And again, it fluctuates depending on the time of year. We're in high season right now, and whenever the weather gets warm, we tend to get very busy. As Debbie will tell you, you cannot find a hotel room in this city right now.
Is that right?
We are pretty much at near-sellout condition. And it's not only high season, but it's also the weather, it's the economy, and I like to think some of the marketing.
Well, just on that point, I just was reading in the Orange County Business Journal yesterday, I guess, that the Newport... Hyatt Regency, Newporter, I guess, is changing hands?
It was sold.
It already has been sold.
Yeah, it was sold by its ownership group. It won't affect how Hyatt operates, it's really just, you know...
Ownership.
From Sunstone was the owner that sold.
So you don't see any issues there?
Yes. No, I don't. Actually, I'm very excited, because with the two new remodeled hotels near the airport and Lido House, we have some wonderfully refreshed product that, you know, it always enables us to tell a better story when we have new things to talk about. And right now, we have probably some of the best hotel product we've ever had.
That's great. And again, thank you to your board, too, for the fine work, the good counsel that they provide. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Avery.
Thank you. Gary, I concur that I just think your operation's first-class, and I think this marketing campaign represents the city for what it is, which is an exceptional place, and I think it really gets it across. I would just like your thoughts, like looking 10 years ahead, or perhaps even further, in terms of, you know, at peak season, it looks like we're probably at capacity. Like, right now, we're at capacity. And what do you see in the future in terms of possible new hotels? We know there's a couple of things cooking right now. And how much more growth do you see in the number of rooms in the city in the next 10 years?
Well, unless a project that I've heard about, a small boutique property in Newport Center comes about, and if the Dunes decides to move ahead with their property, I don't see a lot of growth in a lot of new hotel product. I think we're pretty much somewhat landlocked right now. Where I do see us evolving as a destination is becoming much more international. You know, when I... I've now been here 12 and a half years, and when I got here, we were not an international destination at all. In fact, I remember talking to the board about going to an international trade show, and they said, "Why? We don't get any international guests." All of it has changed now. And now, we are becoming more of an international mecca, and we're getting people from other countries, and that's one of the reasons why we're going to pursue Canada as well. But China is the fastest-growing international market in the history of California. And that spigot has not shut off. We are seeing more people come. They're coming into LAX at record numbers. There's almost a million visitors from China now that are coming into California. They weren't even in the top seven maybe about eight years ago. This has been a hugely surprising market in many ways. I see that continuing to grow. Asia is a growth market. There's a lot of political instability right now, of course, in the UK and in Europe, so we'll have to kind of watch that carefully as we do all of our international markets. But I do see us becoming much more international in that respect, and that's going to be good. And it's going to be a market share issue between us and LA.
Great, thank you. Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you. Mr. Sherwin, you're probably aware of the very friendly campaign the city of Newport Beach is going to be doing with some airport groups, encouraging airlines to hit a higher altitude at a sooner location. I imagine a lot of your hoteliers are also impacted by these flights. So when folks come and they stay in Newport Beach, either they hear airplanes, or they perhaps have them even overhead, and they can hear them in the hotel room. So perhaps you would consider assisting us in our marketing campaign, if that's something permissible, and put you in touch with those people. But I just want to emphasize, I hope you understand that the quality of life of our residents has a direct relationship to the quality of the experience of your visitors.
Absolutely.
And we hope that we can work together for the benefit of both.
What is good for the resident is good for the visitor and vice versa. So we are completely consistent in that. In fact, I could probably sum up our policy and that of the city's economic development policy, which is, what we try to do is maximize the use of the assets of this community without compromising the quality of life for our residents. That is our whole mantra, so we're more than happy to work with you on that.
Gary, I had a couple of questions, just on the budget side of things, because when I was looking at the brochure, which, thank you very much...
Yeah.
Toward the back, there are two sections. One is the leisure marketing budget. I just want to make sure I understood. That's the TOT?
Correct.
And then the group sales is the T-Bid?
Correct.
Okay. So to Ms. Dixon's point, she had noted the arrangement is that some of the TOT will come back through... I'm sorry, I keep forgetting the difference between it's Newport Beach and Company or Visit Newport Beach. It's Visit Newport Beach, correct?
Right. The tourism marketing aspect is Visit Newport Beach. The umbrella is Newport Beach and Company, yes.
So in our... In our TOT section, we had... We were showing... We were at least projecting about $4.2 million, to your point. And then the marketing budget for VNB in here is around $5 million. VNB brings in more money than just the TOT, if I recall correctly. Would you mind just talking a little bit about where some of the revenues come from? So when we're looking through this and trying to understand, it would just be helpful to remind folks.
Right. So our major revenue streams, again, are the 18% from the TOT out of the 10%, and then we get the 3% for the T-Bid, and that's factored over those, you know, nine properties that then fund that sales effort. Additionally, we have contracts with you for Newport Beach TV. We have contracts with the Restaurant Association to manage Dine Newport Beach. We have contracts with The Chamber to manage the Boat Parade, and of course, Balboa Village and Balboa Island. So they're not big numbers, those other contracts, by any stretch of the imagination. They're probably in the low-six figures, but they do cumulatively add up, and we try probably in the low six figures, but they do cumulatively add up, and we try to leverage and create value by trying to, trying to create synergies between all of these different business units.
Great, thank you. Any other? No? All right.
And that, by the way, that document you have is our annual business plan, is not shown to our visitors. It's only done internally, and the reason we put so much effort into it is our hospitality community wants that kind of thinking from us because they develop their own business plans based on whatever we're going to be doing. So we spend a lot of time thinking that out. That's why there's a lot of information in that document that our hotels and others use.
Can I just say one more thing?
Yes, Ms. Dixon.
Gary, would you do me, do us a favor? Would you tell Sir Patrick Stewart the next time you see him that Newport Beach is known for a lot more than what he referenced? I don't want to even repeat what he said because I don't want to create that impression.
Well, we edited his remarks. He was actually very gracious about coming here to town.
I'm sure he was. Just a little friendly reminder that Newport Beach has many, many value-added benefits, so thank you.
Absolutely. Will do.
Thank you, Gary.
Thank you very much.
Public comment.
Mayor Protam O'Neill, members of the council. My name is Jim Mosher. You just, of course, heard and saw a lot of glitz, and beyond the glitz, you have more mundane decisions you have to make in connection with this tonight involving budgets. And I would think even if you feel that there is a need to market Newport Beach, which I think is a city that pretty much markets itself, probably without this effort, whether this is even the best organization for doing that. I have to say, though, I am very impressed every time I hear these numbers, like $4.3 million investment generates a $63 million return, 749% return on investment. Those are very impressive numbers, and as a council, I would think you would be thinking if the entire city revenue could be put into that effort, it would compound fantastically. We would all be billionaires, and our unfunded pension liability would disappear overnight. So I'm not sure why you're not considering doing that tonight, or perhaps it has to be put on the agenda. In any event, as the tax increase that the residents would experience if it was not for this effort and our visitors, I'm certainly curious to know how much the visitors cost us. They are generating money, they're also costing us. That, I think, is in principle, is why we have a TOT tax. And the first point, place is to offset the costs that they have. I also have questions, as you probably know, about the governance of this organization, which is confusing to me as it is to some of you. There seems to be a Newport Beach &amp; Company and a Visit Newport Beach that, as I understand it, are completely separate nonprofit organizations, but I looked through the copy I have of the glossy brochure here on page 164, which is 12, 169. It shows a single board of directors, so I wonder if we could have clarification if the two separate organizations have identically the same board of directors. Seems a little bit strange to me. And then, second, I don't know how many of you were here when there was an audit quite several years ago that found things were not all totally correct with Newport Beach, and as a result of that, we put a city representative, as you heard, on the executive committee of, is it, of whatever it is, Newport Beach, or I don't know, the executive committee of the organizations. And since we have that appointee, and I think he's actually here tonight, I'm curious if you have heard back from our watchdog on that, in that organization, and why you would not be wanting actually to hear his comments tonight. And then finally, regarding the T-Bid and the item that is on the agenda tonight, I think it's acknowledged that the plan that's being presented doesn't include the Lido House Hotel, so it's not the correct plan for the coming year, and I'm wondering how you can approve a budget and a plan that is not the correct one for the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Mayor Protam and council, my name is Tim Stokes. First of all, I want to thank Gary and Newport Beach &amp; Company for their working with the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter to try and market an effort to make Newport Beach the most animal-welcoming town to our visitors. So we were able to work with, or are working with Gary and his staff to try and create a guidebook for benefit of the Friends of Newport Beach Animal Shelter. Newport Beach is an aspirational town, and even more because of it being animal-welcoming. I just want to correct Councilman Dixon that John Wayne is an international airport. It's not just, we do have a direct flight from Canada, so, and that became a thing. So my concern is that as we have a blight called the airport, and it does impact our town greatly, how much are we expecting our visitors' arm to grow that amenity into Newport Beach where it becomes not a, an equity issue, but more of a blight to our community? Now, I know that we're, just by the definition of visitor coming into our community, everyone that comes into our airport is a visitor. So as you know, the cap, or the map cap in January 1st of 2021 goes from 10.8 million annual passengers to 11.8 million annual passengers per their settlement agreement. So from that definition, we're growing visitors. So I'm concerned with that. I'm concerned with the growth of the airport as the rest of our residents are. So I would ask that the council be conscious of that, as well as not over expectations from our Visitor Bureau to create a problem for us.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Seeing none, we'll bring it back. Gary, I feel like every couple of years when you bring this up, you get asked the question about governance and the difference between the companies. It might be worth just real quickly clarifying that one.
I'm happy to do so, Mayor Protam. So Newport Beach, Visit Newport Beach was created as a standalone organization in 1989. It was then Newport Beach Conference and Visitors Bureau. We changed our name in '09 to Visit Newport Beach. That entity has a contractual relationship with the city of Newport Beach to provide tourism-related services. When the discussion came about by past council members to take on some additional responsibilities, including the Restaurant Association, the Boat Parade, the neighborhoods, they felt that it was best not to muddy the responsibilities of this contractual relationship that we have with you under Visit Newport Beach, and that perhaps we need to create an umbrella organization that would capture all the business units, including Visit Newport Beach. So we created a umbrella organization that would service all of them. Because Visit Newport Beach is still a organization with its own board, if you come to our monthly executive committee meetings, they have two agendas, one of which is for Visit Newport Beach. That's all the items related to that particular contract we have with you, as well as all of our services. And then they have a secondary budget, and that includes all the other things that we get involved in from Newport Beach TV and the Boat Parade and Dine and such. We thought it was best to separate the two so that it would not get muddied, and in order to streamline the governance, we created the same board for both organizations because we felt it would be in conflict, and perhaps there would be information that could get lost. So they are the same people, but they have two different governing responsibilities, and they have different finances, they have their own bylaws. So they are two separate organizations, but they are the same people involved in the governance, of which the same executive committee who's with you today. I hope that clarifies it for you.
Thank you very much, Gary. Any other comments? All right, seeing, oh.
Lita Brown, I'm a resident of Newport Beach. I'm speaking as a resident, and my concern is, is that our Board of Supervisors is looking to expand this airport. And if we're encouraging international travel, bringing in, you know, talking a lot about how these international people are bringing money to the city, money to the county, we are not helping the cause of the residents, which is to make this a, to not expand the airport. So I'm worried, one, about how this affects the Board of Supervisors. I also feel that we're not recognizing that additional tourism will impact the airport. I don't care if we say they're coming into LAX. There's going to be, it will impact the airports. Yes, it brings money to the city, but this, this noise, these low-flying planes, the increase in planes, is not going to help our tourism industry. I mean, they're flowing, flying right over our little Jim Balboa Island, they're flying very low over that. We're saying, we're showing these beautiful pictures of the peninsula, noisy. You know, even Balboa Yacht Club, or Balboa Bay Club, I've been there, and you have to stop talking when, when the planes come by. So I understand why you're doing that. I understand that Newport Beach is a, is a beautiful town, but I, as a resident, would like to see it, see us handle the airport before we start trying to increase visitors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. All right, seeing none, we'll bring it back up. Any further comments? No? Thank you very much for being here and giving us the information. I'll turn it back over to our mayor.
All right, we're now going to have public comments on agenda and non-agenda items. Anyone from the public would like to speak on non-agenda items or agenda items?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name once more is Jim Mosher, and I think that invitation includes the closed-session agenda, and I want to call your attention to two items on it. One is B, public employee appointment of a city manager, and second, conference with the mayor acting as a labor negotiator for an unrepresented employee, the city manager. I don't know how many people know that you met yesterday at the Newport Marriott Hotel here in Newport Center with those exact same two items on your agenda there. One presumes you were interviewing candidates for the appointment as a city manager there. Regarding the item tonight about labor negotiation with the city manager, to the best of my knowledge, the unrepresented city manager is sitting over here. His name is Dave Kiff. I assume the one who's referred to on the agenda is somebody different than that if you're actually going to be in closed session negotiating with a city manager, so perhaps it should say prospective city manager, if that's even legal to be doing that under the Brown Act, which I'm not quite sure. Beyond that, I wanted to mention that the city manager is a public employee and a very important public employee because they set the tone for how the public is, is received at the City Hall, because they manage all of the administrative functions at the City Hall. And in view of that, I would think you might feel like you owe the public a little bit of a report on what the status of is this search for a new city manager. Did you interview candidates yesterday? How many applications were there? How many people did you interview? And if you are negotiating with somebody tonight, does that mean that you have selected somebody at this point? I think those are all questions that the public would be interested in knowing, has a right to know, and you, as a city council, are free to tell us. You may have discussed it in closed session, but if you agree, you can tell the public for sure what happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Councilman Muldoon.
Thank you, Mayor. If it is agreeable, I do think it would be nice for the public to know what process has occurred thus far and how it was done, and how it's going to continue to unfold because it's a pretty legitimate question, and obviously, without disclosing anything that would jeopardize anyone's position at a current employment or opportunity somewhere else.
Yeah, perhaps there's something, disclosure we can discuss in closed session about what you would like to inform the public about. So I think that is a good point.
Okay.
So we could do that right after we come back from closed session.
All right, great, thank you. All right, moving on, closed session, Mr. Harp.
Yeah, so briefly, the closed-session announcement, Mayor Duffield. The city council adjourned to closed session to discuss items 4A through G, including meeting with labor negotiators Dave Kiff, Carol Jacobs, Barbara Salvini, and Peter Brown to discuss labor negotiations with those unions that are listed under Agenda Item Number 4A. The council will also meet to discuss the appointment of a new city manager, meet with labor negotiator Duffy Duffield, discuss labor negotiations with the potential new city manager, as well as city clerk and city attorney. Council will meet, legal council, discuss litigation titled Patrick McCann versus the city of Newport Beach. They will also meet to discuss one matter of anticipated litigation, and meet to discuss the performance of the city attorney and city clerk. The city attorney and city clerk will recuse themselves from item 4G because it's their contract negotiations based on possible impact on their personal finances, and I believe Mayor Duffield had an announcement regarding a conflict as well.
Yes, on item E.
So that'd be item 4E, the anticipated litigation item.
Right.
And I believe that's based on your business interests and source of income?
Yes. All right. Are you finished? Yep.
We'll be back after closed session.
All right, we are recessed till 7 o'clock meeting. I'd like to call to order a meeting for the July 24, 2018, regular meeting. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
The record rule reflects that all members of council are present.
Mr. Harp, is there a closed-session report?
We do have a brief closed-session report this evening. The city council has authorized me to make the following statements in regards to the recruitment of a new city manager. The city received a total of 72 applications, and the city council selected and interviewed seven highly qualified applicants. Those interviews with the seven applicants occurred yesterday at the Newport Beach Marriott, and that was done at the suggestion of the recruiter, and it's primarily done to protect the identities of those who are putting in for, for the position. After extensive deliberation, the city council decided to conduct second interviews with three of the best and most experienced applicants. Those interviews will be conducted on August 13th. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now have the invocation. We'll now have the invocation by Councilmember Hurdman and our pledge of allegiance by Councilman Avery.
Please join me by bowing your heads. Dear Lord, be prayerful for us who lead and serve. We pray that your presence will be in this room and in our lives. We are God's workmanship, created to do good works. Let that plan guide us in our work tonight and every day that follows. Let God work in all of us and through all of us. Amen.
Madam Clerk.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are, are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode.
Thank you. All right, we'll, we'll now have city council announcements. I would like to start with Councilman Avery.
I have no announcements, except I will be recusing myself an item for Balboa Peninsula pedestrian crossing improvements due to real property interest.
Thank you. Mr. Pieter. Mrs. Dixon.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Airport issues are, are top of mind for all of us. We were just talking about them in study session, for those who are listening. The greatest long-term threat to the quality of life in Newport Beach is an unconstrained John Wayne Airport. History has proven, however, that if Newport Beach residents are informed and engaged, together, we can successfully mitigate the airport's adverse impacts. To that end, you see on the slide here, city residents are receiving, starting this week, a newsletter that explains what the city is currently working on to address concerns raised by residents and to try to mitigate these adverse impacts related to some recent changes to John Wayne Airport operations, particularly the recent implementation of FAA, the FAA's Next Gen program. Councilmembers Hurdman and Muldoon and I have been meeting with community groups and working with a team of city staff, consultants, and citizens. Our overarching goal is to have flights leaving John Wayne Airport follow the quietest, safest, least polluting departure procedure possible. So, this, I'm speaking, and subsequently, Mr. Muldoon and Hurdman may make a comment too. We encourage you to take a few minutes to please read this newsletter. We'll be arriving hard copy in the mail, and it's also available online, isn't it, Tara? Yes. If you haven't received it in your mailbox yet, you will shortly. For those of you in the audience tonight, we have some copies in the foyer. You could also find the newsletter and a lot of information about the city's efforts. There's a lot of information at NewportBeachCA.gov/jwa. And we feel it's important to the long-term success of our efforts that our community feels informed about this issue. And finally, we would appreciate residents taking our brief online survey at this same site, JWA survey also. So, I'd like to jump ahead, if I may, Mayor, to Mr. Muldoon and Mr. Hurdman, who have been leading this effort together, if they're, for their comments.
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dixon. This is an excellent newsletter. A lot of effort went into it in order to, and it's our next step in this overall plan of educating the community whether they live under the flight path or not. And it's a four-page newsletter, not a newsletter, really, it's a letter that I would encourage and ask that everyone who receives it, read it. About 45,000 copies have been mailed out, 42, 40,000, 45? Thank you.
Thank, and, and thank you. And just to follow up with Councilman Hurdman and Councilman Dixon's remarks, we are a couple steps into the process. We have retained and are working with a technical company that is going to be working on determining what recommendations or what requests we would like to make specifically of the airlines. So, addition to educating the residents, we hope to start educating and work with the airlines, at which point, when we have an idea of what we think is the best for the community as far as safest and less, least impactful procedure, we hope to go to the community again and ask them to join us in reaching out to the airlines to make them aware of our concern and to show unity on this issue, and hopefully continue that successful dialogue with the airlines. Mr. Kiff and Tara Finnegan have been doing a great job quarterbacking this, doing this nice mail piece and working on meetings with airlines, so thank you very much for those efforts. And we will keep all the residents of Newport Beach apprised as we progress.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim O'Neil.
Did, did you have anything else to? Okay, I'm sorry, I think Mr. Hurdman still has other things to say.
Oh. Go for it.
I have nothing to announce, but I would like to recuse myself from Consent Calendar, Item Number Five, Balboa Island Seawall Capping Project, because of real property interests.
All right. Mayor Pro Tim O'Neil.
Maybe Mr. Muldoon.
I had one more thing to say. Five years ago this evening, I was set up on a blind date with my now-wife, Heather Hewlett. She watches all these council meetings. The least I could do is thank her for her support and for making me the luckiest man alive and marrying me, and for now being the, the mother of our future child. And I know it's cheesy, but I have to take the opportunity to say happy birthday, Heather.
Great job. That's going to go a long way at home.
Maybe not.
Just saying. Mayor Pro Tim O'Neil.
So, I was able to attend the Boys and Girls Club ribbon cutting for their corporate office. They've been a fantastic partner inside Newport Beach for so long, and the leadership over there is doing a great job, so it was an honor to represent the city at that ribbon cutting. We also, in the city, hosted the ACCOC out on our green out there, and it was also an honor to welcome all of those elected officials and folks who understand the way government works. And so, that was enjoyable last night, was the Tipicop event over at Javier's benefiting the Special Olympics. Obviously, a truly worthy organization as well, year in, year out. Kudos to our police department for their dedication to raising money for the Special Olympics. And then, coming up, we've got a few weeks between meetings, so I've got a handful of one, a handful of them. There's also, on Thursday night, there's the Miracle of Mobility benefiting an organization that provides free wheelchairs all around the world. On August 2nd, there is the Newport Beach Junior Guard Monster Mile. On the 7th is the Newport Beach Police Department National Night Out. On the 10th, Newport Beach Day at the Orange County Fair. And then, August 12th, Constance on the Green Return. Hope to see y'all there.
Great, thank you. And I think that, just my one comment would be, what a great idea for that newsletter. I wish we had thought of that before, maybe already had one years ago, I don't know, but what a great way to bring everyone together. That's a, that's awesome. So, I also wanted to tip my hat to the Tipicop event last night, it's an awesome thing, that was very fun. All right, moving on, Madam Clerk.
This is the time in which council members may pull items from the consent calendar for discussion. Those are Items 1 through 12. Public comments are also invited on consent calendar items. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. If any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under consent calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommended in action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from this consent calendar for separate action. I also want to announce that I will be recusing myself on Item 4 due to real property interests.
All right, thank you. So, council, are there any items to be pulled from the consent calendar? I'll start with Councilman Avery.
I have none.
Mr. Pieter. Mrs. Dixon.
I have none.
Mr. Hurdman.
I have none.
Mr. Muldoon. And Mayor Pro Tim O'Neil.
I have none.
And I have to recuse myself on Item 3 as a, my residence is in the area, and on Item 12 because of business relationship. Okay.
All right. Mr. Mayor, I move balance of the consent calendar with a recusal from the mayor on Number 3, a recusal of Number, on Number 4 from Councilman Avery and our city clerk, on Number 5 from Councilman Hurdman, and Number 12, excuse me, a recusal from Councilman Hurdman on Number 5, and a recusal from our mayor on Item Number 12.
I'll second that.
Great, thank you. All right, now, we'll go to public comments on the consent calendar. Are there, would anyone like to come up and speak on the consent calendar?
Mayor Duffield and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Regarding Item 10 on the consent calendar, which is the report on the spending of the city council members discretionary grants, I think it should not go without comment that Councilman Pieter spent none of his grant money this last year and in previous years, and I think he should be congratulated for that prudence. I do not think that should go unnoted. And also, on consent calendar, Item 12, this is a whole slew of things you need to approve about Visit Newport Beach and the tourism bid. Some of them, once every two years, some every one year. You had a study session on that this afternoon, as I tried to point out. Item 12, E and F are requiring you to review, approve, and/or modify the Tourism Bid's fiscal year 2018 through 2019 annual report and their 2018 through 2019 budget. The report and the budget that you have in the agenda packet, which is Attachment D, does not include the Lido House Hotel, which you added at your last meeting to the tourism bid. Therefore, the report you have and the budget you have clearly are not the right report or the right budget for the coming fiscal year. Therefore, of the three choices you have, I believe you need to modify the report or ask that it be modified and ask that the budget be modified, and then re-approve it after it's been corrected, and I'm not quite sure how that's going to happen, and I definitely don't know how it's happening on the consent calendar. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other speakers? All right, seeing none, bring it back, Mr. Muldoon. Leftover, okay. We have a failed screen up here. Anyway, okay, we have a motion. Let's vote.
Motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Great, thank you. Madam Clerk.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items? Please come up.
Good evening, I'm Susan Skinner. Democracy works best when democratic processes are respected. Under the Gang of Four, democracy appears to be under attack, with the most egregious examples being the choice to add 3,700 pages to the Museum House referendum petition and the effort led by Mr. O'Neil to force the retirement of Mr. Kiff. When you decided to propose a new law, making it more difficult for residents to qualify initiatives, you spoke eloquently about how you could not tolerate violations of our election laws. However, let me point out a total disconnect between that statement and your actions in court recently when you fought to avert any accountability for the alleged campaign law violations made by Mr. Pieter and Mr. Duffield, violations serious enough to remove them both from office if they are validated. Instead of seeking transparency and actually enforcing those election laws of which you speak, our city attorney, Aaron Harp, asserted in court that he does not have the authority to enforce campaign laws under the Newport Beach Municipal Code. I would point out that he did think he had the authority to prevent Mr. Hurdman from running for city council in 2016, a case that was immediately thrown out by a judge, but apparently not to prosecute an actual violation of the law. The city's taxpayer-funded outside attorneys argued in court that appointing a special counsel to act in lieu of Mr. Harp is a completely discretionary decision on the part of the city council, effectively arguing that only the city council has the right to make the decision to investigate themselves, and that they convince the judge that this is the case. Apparently, the FPPC and the DA have also deferred to the city attorney. To reiterate, the FPPC, the DA, and the court have ceded the authority to investigate the city council back to the city council itself. And you claim that nobody besides yourself can investigate or punish your own wrongdoing. Does that sound like democracy to you? It doesn't to me. So, let me ask you here tonight, are you only for law and order in some circumstances, but not others? How egregious does a campaign violation need to be before you will act? If you refuse to make such an investigation, as you have done, to whom may we appeal that decision since you feel that we should not go to court to do so? Even more serious than the campaign finance violations are the Government Code 1090 allegations now made against Mr. Duffield. Allegations which absolutely require an immediate investigation will also mandate, his immediate mandate, will mandate removal from office if validated. Does the city attorney take the position that he will not enforce these sections of the city charter and the state government code as well? Honestly, what's the point of having laws on the books if the officials who are sworn to uphold these laws refuse to act? So, what are you going to do about it? The ball is in your court. You can appoint a special counsel to investigate, or you can continue to do nothing. From my perspective, this stinks to high heaven. It is time to clean up Newport Beach and remove the origin of the problem. It is time to remove Mr. Pieter, Muldoon, Duffield, and O'Neil from our city council and restore trust and transparency to our city. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers? Please come up.
My name is Bob Rush. I'm here this evening to speak to the yet-to-be-named measure to obtain voter approval on debt over 50 million. That approval would be 55% vote of, of the voting public. I submitted in the last two weeks formal disagreement with that measure. I think it doesn't go far enough. I think we need to go much further. And if anybody needs any further evidence, looking to the previous administration that did not follow the charter at all, but instead doled out money to favored causes, starving out valid causes, Susan B. Coleman, other type of events, they took money out of the general fund. This would be Keith Curry, Rush Hill, Mike Hen. They actually took money out of the general fund illegally because there was a charter prohibition, and they transferred it to the chamber, and then the chamber transferred it back into their reelection campaigns of the very men who gave them free money. Now, this is documented in an investigational article written in 2010 by Tony Savidra about how this cycle works. It's done through waived fees, and in this article, it's entitled "City Waives $65,000 in Fees for Taste of Newport." Meanwhile, valid causes like Susan B. Coleman were starving. Now, they're not even on our discretionary roster, apparently. Now, these corrupt individuals caused this problem where we have now, some, we're looking in somewhere in the vicinity of $228 million or more of debt in '41. The, the community deserves to have a right of approval. I believe it should be anything in excess of 25 million, and it should be a three-quarter vote of the voting public. Now, I have submitted my disagreement formally to the city clerk's office. I would also like to submit this article about this terribly corrupt practice that went on for perhaps as many as 15 years. Rush Hill was involved in it when he was at, at the chamber, taking the money, knowing that it was illegal. He was involved as a councilman, giving the money, knowing it was illegal, and it went on for years. Curry knew it, Hen knew it, and they all covered it up. And this article was one of the few that were written that covered that, that illegal activity. They, they robbed the taxpayers, they robbed the general fund of perhaps as much as 500 to a million dollars, 500,000 to a million dollars. We cannot let that happen again. I, I demand tighter limits on this debt approval issue, whatever this measurement whatever this measurement is going to be named. I believe that we should have three-quarters vote of the public, as well as a tighter limit, $25 million. I sat and watched Rush Hill say he's going to keep the Taj Mahal to 70 million. That thing is now, we're looking at 220-something into the 41. That's incredible. That's incredible. And we lose buildings if there's any default on these things. There's pseudo leases created. Anyways, I'm going to, may I approach the city clerk for this article?
Sure.
This will document what I'm talking about.
All right, thank you. Are there any other speakers would like to comment?
Mayor Duffield and members of the city council, my name is Jim Mosher. I probably won't speak with as much passion as the last two speakers, but I did want to make a comment about the city manager recruitment process. I would like to thank you very much for updating us on that process, as you just did, and I wanted to make a couple of comments that might help you in thinking about the future of the process. I wanted to remind you of two provisions of the Brown Act. One is a very old provision that says if a city council makes a selection of somebody that they want to appoint at a closed session, that selection has to be announced at the end of the closed session, at that meeting. Second provision, which I reminded you of yesterday, is a new provision which says that city councils are not allowed to discuss salaries of employees, present or future ones, at a special meeting. It has to take place at a regular meeting. I would invite you to go back to the good old days, which were never quite as good as people imagined they were, to August 18, 2009, when our last city manager appointment took place at a special afternoon meeting with five of the seven council members present that afternoon. If you look at the video of that meeting, where the city council met in, for 13 minutes to consider the employment of a new city manager, at 1 minute and 25 seconds in the video, you will hear the then-city attorney, Mr. David R. Hunt, say that the council met in closed session to consider the appointment of a public employee, and there was no reportable action. If you wait 23 seconds in the video, you will hear the mayor of Newport Beach, Ed Selich, say, "At this time, it is my pleasure to announce the city council has selected Dave Kiff as our next city manager." Now, how can it be that there was no reportable action, and yet the mayor knows that a selection was made? And when you look further into the video, you'll find that the selection was actually made sometime earlier, at a meeting that was never disclosed, and the vote on it was never disclosed. Compounding that problem, immediately after that, the council went on to approve the contract for Mr. Kiff, which apparently the public had not seen or had any chance to comment on, did not know what the new compensation was going to be, or anything about it, because if the contract had been shown to the public, they would see the name on it, which apparently the council didn't want the public to see, so that it would be a big surprise. Now, I hope that this council is going to manage the process a little more gracefully than that. If you make a selection on August 13, the day you make before your next meeting, or at your next meeting, I hope the public will be told that you have made a selection and who that selection is, and I find it very doubtful you'll work out the details of the contract with that employee by the evening of August 14, and I would remind you that you don't have any other regular meetings in August, so you will not be able to make an appointment until September 11, which does not seem like the most auspicious day, but keep that in mind. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Are there any others, are there any other speakers? Seeing none. Our next item will be oral reports from city council on committee activities. I'm not going to go through any of the names. I'll just, seeing none, okay. And I have none. We'll now go to our first item, item 13, which I need to recuse myself because it involves a harbor policy issue.
And also that potentially impacts your source of income.
Okay. Wait a moment. Okay. Would anyone like a staff report? Okay. Let's go out to public comment.
Just for the public certification, this is the approval of a fee study update.
Mr. Mosher?
Yes. Yeah, thank you. I'm glad that we just heard what this is. I thought there would be some discussion of it. I want, assuming that you are planning to approve everything as was presented to you, this, this new fee structure that you're approving has within it a new concept that was advanced by Councilman Pieter at the last meeting, and I did not know that all of you were, oh, actually, first, before I say anything, I want to say these recusals by the mayor are a little bit confusing, and I don't think many people in the, in the public understand what the impact on his finances is, why he can't talk about something as general as, as the city's fee schedule. And I point out to you in the Political Reform Act, the, you not only have to, to have a, you not only have to leave the room, but you have to explain to the public in enough detail that the public understands why it is a conflict for you, and I don't think we're getting that clarity. But anyway, returning to this issue, Councilman Pieter suggested that in appeals to the Building and Fire Board of Appeals about interpretation of the building code, that if the applicant is successful in their appeal, that their appeal fee would be refunded, or in other words, they would have no appeal fee to charge. I wanted to suggest to you that that equally could apply to our planning and coastal LCP, where the director, the same one who would be making the building code interpretation, can make interpretations of, of what the planning zoning code says, or what the local coastal program code says. And the public, if they question what the director says and want to appeal that, have to pay the fee, whether the director was right, wrong, or indifferent. I know myself that I tried to, I questioned whether there was an appeal fee for appealing a coastal development permit. The director interpreted the code, which I could find no fee specified in it, as charging a fee of $1,536, which I see as going up to $1,637. But in questioning his, his interpretation of the code, which clearly did not say that, I was told I would have to pay another $1,536 to have the planning commission refer to, to consider the community development director's interpretation of the coastal plan. I believe if it turns out that the director was wrong, that, that for the same reasoning as the appeals to the building and fire code of appeal, Board of Appeal, that, that fee should be refunded. Same, same logic would apply to both. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
All right, seeing none. Is there a discussion up at the dais? Mr. Muldoon?
Thank you. Yeah, so generally, I'm against fee increases. One thing that I am a little concerned about is the junior guard specifically. I see here that there's an increase, and it's, it's not, it seems nominal to many people, but, you know, becoming a junior guard is a great source of pride for young, you know, young adults here in Newport Beach, and for some who's qualified. It is actually a significant amount, and I think it's a great community outreach. So I'm likely going to vote no against these fee increases regardless, but perhaps someone who wants to support it would like to find a way to reduce it for those children who find it a great opportunity to give back to the community, trying to become lifeguards when they get older and fit in with opportunities that their peers share. Generally, I don't think it's, it's in the best interest of the city to continue to look how to get more revenue from residents when I feel those revenues radically gathered from taxes found other places. Thank you.
Any other conversation at the dais? That's okay, Mr. Hurdman?
I've read the staff report, I think, four times. I don't recall anything about an increase in local coaster, coastal permit fees that Mr. Mosher just cited. Can somebody help me out?
I'm not sure if what Mr. Mosher is referring to is the coastal development permit fee. It's not increasing the fee. It's actually changing where it was a deposit account charged hourly. Now, it's a flat fee. It was studied.
That's what I thought. Okay, thank you. I just needed clarification.
Any other discussion? Do we have a, Mr. Harp?
I just wanted to mention that there's some amended resolutions that were distributed.
Amended resolution and ordinance.
And ordinance.
In your packet.
How have they been amended? Very sick.
Essentially, we're still working on updating a comparison for the BIA, for the life safety services fees. So we removed the life safety services fees from your approval.
Should we wait and approve when you've actually received those, so we don't have to come back on those?
We're not sure when we're going to come back with the life safety services fees, so our preference was to do the CPI increases for all the non-studied departments, as well as the studied fees for the fire, EMS, ALS, BLS fees, not waiting on those for the life safety.
So if I understand this correctly, we've done, what is in front of us in terms of the amendment, and the only amendments is the, is to remove the life safety fees out of the proposed fee increases?
That is absolutely correct.
And we keep using the word fee increases, but we've actually got a number of fee decreases.
Fee adjustments.
And in fact, we have a number of fee deletions as well in here.
The, most of the fee, the deletions were from the life safety services, but yes, the fees that are going up and going down, any adjustments are included in here as well.
Got it. Okay, Ms. Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protim. I know we did not request a staff report, but between Mr. Kiff and yourself, would you just define what a fee is, just so people understand what a user fee is, and how the study was done in terms of the cost to the city to perform a certain service that is utilized by a very small portion, if one person, or a number of people, but it's not provided to the entire population? If you just clarify that, please.
Right. So the fees, as we're referring to them, are cost of service fees. They are for our staff time, direct and indirect time used to provide the service to the requesting person or group of people.
And it's not, it's not a service that would be provided through the general fund services of the city. These are specific services requested by an individual or a group of people.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do we have a motion? Anyone?
I'll move approval of this agenda item. Do you want me to state what it is?
No.
Okay.
Is it move staff recommendation? Is that what you're?
Oh, yeah.
All right. Do we have a second?
As amended with the resolution and ordinance.
As amended.
Yes.
Can I make a friendly amendment? Because I'm thinking a little bit more about what Mr. Muldoon was saying, and that's a decent point, because one of the things that, as I'm listening to Ms. Dixon talk about this, it's, it's worth reminding folks that this, the, the policy of the city council for, gosh, Mr. Kiff, decades, has been to recover 100% of the fees, but then there are judgment calls to be made when it comes down to subsidizing some of them in order to encourage the, the activity.
Correct.
Okay. I'm pretty, I'm pretty comfortable keeping the, the fee for the junior guards where it is and maintaining that, that level, and if we need to subsidize just a bit at the city level, then that's probably worthy. So I would, is that a friendly?
100% agree with you.
Okay. Does that make sense, staff, what we've just recommended?
Sure.
All right, any further?
Did you say Mr. Muldoon was going to vote for this, if you did?
I have not made any guarantees.
I'm just trying to clarify this. Or are we looking at the general fund, subsidizing everybody on every fee?
No, I don't believe we're doing that. I mean, it, it makes sense in the concept of, when we think of a lot of our tax revenue, certainly, we anticipate it going to things like public safety, police, and fire. If you call your, if you dial 911, you expect that service to be paid from general fund, and then when the people show up, you expect them to be paid by the general fund. And so the difference, though, being that if you, if your neighbors decided to tear their house down and put it back up, the permit fees ought to be borne by the, by your neighbor, not you. So I think that's, that's generally how I've always understood it. Anyway, Mr. Hurdman, I've got you in next in queue.
I'm wondering if I could amend my motion to exclude the junior guard fee from my motion and, and consider that separate, or we wouldn't even have to make a motion on it. It would just stay as is.
So the friendly amendment that has been offered is to accept your motion and then simply remove the increase for the junior guard.
Junior guards.
Is that acceptable?
That's fine.
And who made the second? I'm sorry, I lost. Mr. Pieter, is that acceptable? All right. Ms. Dixon?
Well, just to make a clarifying comment, just to remind everyone that the city and through the general fund and the capital fund program will be advancing funds to support the construction, the design and construction of a junior lifeguard headquarters, which will be a significant amount of money. So I, I, very noble, and certainly, if there's relief, validated, but I do feel that the city is doing its part in a 50/50 basis for the junior lifeguards, which is a wonderful organization, and I love them to death, but I'm just trying to be equitable here.
Mr. Avery?
I, I think the fee is appropriate for the junior guards. It, it takes a lot to put that program on, and certainly, it represents citywide, I think, a minority of, of kids of that age. But I do think, I would hate to think of anybody that wanted to do it, that they could not afford to do it, or that it precluded them from attending, and I think the way to solve this, like a lot of things, I just think it's a tremendous fundraising. I think you would have no problem raising money with a proper program, and I'm sort of surprised we don't have it.
Actually, I think the foundation does offer scholarships.
Yeah.
For someone who can't pay the fee.
Right, and I think that's the appropriate solution here, so, for what it's worth.
Maybe, maybe then the discussion ought to, maybe the unofficial direction to staff ought to be bring the junior guard fee back the next time we do an update. And when we're looking at that, let's, let's talk about how the city can help out in, in a, in that, in that capacity, certainly, especially if we're increasing the fees.
Yep.
So tonight, the friendly amendment has been accepted, and so we would be moving staff recommendation without a junior guard increase, with a informal recommendation to staff that the next time fees are brought back, that the junior guard fee also be brought back with the proposal of somehow ensuring that those who would be unable to afford it would be, we can find some kind of program to either work with the foundation or otherwise to make sure that the fee increase doesn't cause people not to be able to do it. Well, it's, the friendly amendment would be to Mr. Hurdman, so. Sorry, you need your mic on.
A friendly amendment, when you say next time, are we talking next year? Or when, when do fees get looked at again?
Yeah, because these have to be noticed in a public hearing, so it will take a while. So if you, I think it's a good recommendation. Sorry, easy for me to say, that this come back next year.
Okay.
With, with those things that you recommend. We could also do an analysis of how many scholarships are given and to whom. I think that'd be helpful to the staff report.
I think that would be helpful.
And you're coming back with fire, life, safety fees in 60 days or so? So come back then. All right, thank you.
I would suggest when we do the more holistic approach, especially if, as we get past the junior guard program, but anyway. Mr. Avery, is this still on, or did you, okay. All right, any further discussion? All right, seeing none, let's vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2018-13 and ordinance of the city council of the city of Newport Beach amending Exhibit A, where not done yet, mayor, to Newport Beach Municipal Code, Section 3.36.030, related to cost recovery. The motion carries with Councilmember Muldoon voting no, 5-1.
All right, we'll now have item number 14.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and council members, ordinarily, I'd say, do you want a staff report on this? But I do think it's important, just to summarize the essential terms, this is a First Amendment and restating of the contract with Police Chief John and restating of the contract with Police Chief John Lewis. And just as a reminder for the folks at home, state law now requires us to consider amendments like this in public, not on the consent calendar. And just kind of to summarize, the major changes involve what I consider to be a merit increase for Chief Lewis of 4%. And then Chief Lewis's contract is tied to the Police Management Association, and that's primarily to avoid compaction, this concept of where potentially a deputy chief or a lieutenant could eventually make more than the chief, and that becomes a disincentive to be the chief. So in the event that the Police Management Association got a raise, a COLA, that Chief Lewis's contract would be adjusted as well. And that was some confusion, and I will apologize to Hillary Davis with the pilot. The chief's contract increase is not the scope that's in the number. It's not as high as 20,000. It's about 9,000 in pay. And then there's a 1% contribution to deferred compensation, which is also kind of within the concept of what other police staff got. And I'll just summarize, I just, the chief has been on board since, I think, March, well, he's been here all his life, basically, but he's been chief since March of 2016, and I do an evaluation of him. I've found him to be, you know, very strong chief and doing all the right things, and please know that all of that conversation goes into a proposal to make a contract amendment. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
All right, thank you. Mr. Avery. Wrong. Stuck. Okay. All right, any discussion up here? Seeing none? Bring it out to the public? Anyone from the public would like to speak on this item? All right. Okay. Don't forget, he's standing in the back. And he has a gun, too. So, seeing nothing up, oh, Mr. Muldoon.
Thank you, bringing it back. I would like to say that normally I would have pause when it comes to this sort of raise, but when we're looking at a five-year crime low, excellent morale and leadership of our amazing police department, and the oppressive report that we saw, closed session, I'm sorry, study session, that maybe some of you did not see, you would really know that City of Newport Beach is in the great hands from the top down, and we, I would offer you a lot more money to continue this trend, because we are bucking the negative trend in the state of California. And I'm incredibly proud of our chief and police department, and I'm proud to support this sort of acknowledgement of great leadership. So I will make the motion to approve this item.
All right, we've made a motion and a second.
The motion carries unanimously, 7-0.
Madam Clerk.
Motion for reconsideration is a motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with a prevailing side.
Are there any motions for reconsideration? Seeing none, we are adjourned.